Thank you for coming tonight. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Agency Director Mann?
Present.
Marcus?
Here.
Silvio? Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith?
Here.
Mayor Chairman Parris? We have a call.
Do I hear a motion to excuse Mayor Parris? I think Councilman Silvio will probably show up later, and if not, we'll excuse him, too.
Asso moved.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Call for an oral vote. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Tonight, we have Pastor Tom Pickens. Tommy Pickens to do the honors for the invocation, so if ever we could please stand. Thank you for coming tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you, Vice Mayor Smith, council members, audience. You guys go ahead and pray with me. Father, we thank you and praise you for this opportunity, this time. These prestigious people that are gathering, Father, to do such a meeting. He said in First Timothy 2 to pray for those who are in authority, kings and priests, and we thank you, Father, that they're helping us to lead a quiet and peaceful life. Many responsibilities that are coming their way, Lord, I pray that they would have the wisdom, the guidance, and the direction to do what they have been called to do. We thank you, Father, for the insight given to them. We thank you, Lord, and any distractions that are trying to come against this meeting. Father, I thank you that they shall not come. They shall have a smooth meeting and a successful meeting, and they shall succeed in what they do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Councilman Mann, can you do us the honor for the flag summary?
Everyone who would face the flag, put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Agenda items to be removed. I'm going to remove CE1. That was the mayor's topic that he wanted to put on to discuss, so if anybody was here for that, we're going to continue that to another time. Councilwoman Marcus wanted to remove-
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I apologize. We have a presentation tonight. We have a student speaker.
Okay. Let's- as soon as we remove this one here, then go ahead and- since we're in the middle of that one. You want to remove CC8, and maybe you'd like to speak on that for a moment?
Okay. We also have a speaker for CC6.
You have a speaker for CC6? Councilwoman Marcus?
Several months ago, I did ask staff to look into an ordinance to deal with the problem of cargo containers within our city limits. And the staff responded by preparing the ordinance that has been presented. The planning commission at two public hearings have reviewed it. The commission recommended approval of the ordinance with some modifications. The city council held a public hearing on the proposed ordinance on February 24th. And since that meeting, a number of business owners have come forward and have expressed some concerns with that within the industrial areas of the city. And in considering their comments and concerns, I feel that consideration should be given in the ordinance to the use of cargo containers within both the light industrial and heavy industrial areas of our city. Therefore, I'm asking the council to direct staff to prepare modifications to the cargo container ordinance as follows. Allow for the placement of cargo containers in the light industrial and heavy industrial zones of the city. Require that cargo containers in the industrial areas meet the same required setback from property lines as buildings within those zones. And require cargo containers to comply with the same restrictions as cargo containers in the rural residential areas. Specifically, they can't be stacked on top of each other and can only be used for storage, not living purposes, and must be maintained in a neat and clean manner. So I move that we remove this at this time and direct staff to reevaluate, amend it, and bring it back in the near future.
Okay. That's the motion. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Are you all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm not sure if we had any cards for that item.
Do we have any cards for that item? If we do, if you wanted to speak on it, we're gonna bring it back, and then maybe you want to look at the new input and all the changes, and also be part of those changes and-
Well, I'd like to speak on it tonight just for about five minutes real quick, if I could.
Okay. You get three minutes, so-
Three minutes?
Go ahead. Come up here. Did you turn the speaker's card in?
Yes. This is Paul Buckley. And Mr. Buckley, you'll see the three lights on the podium.
Mm-hmm.
The green light comes on when your time starts. The yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds left. And the red light comes on when your time is up. Okay? So go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Paul Buckley. I own the professional pneumatic services down the street, the Coin Shop. The guy behind me has a cargo container, owns business there. It's painted tan. You would not notice it if you really- unless you're looking for it. I have cargo containers on my property. That 50-foot setback is really not in keeping with a rural residential neighborhood. You know, we moved out there to keep from having restrictions. I was cited three years ago for cargo containers. The city's attorney determined that there was no law against cargo containers. And the city of Redondo Beach allows cargo containers to be used as part of structures. The state of Oregon gives you a tax credit for using cargo containers instead of building containers and storage out of wood because of the natural resources. The other point that I want to point out is that they are not a structure under California real estate law. The California real estate law states that it has to be permanently attached to the ground. When I took the course at, I believe it was Berkeley where I took it, the way they explained it is if you bring a 2-by-4 into your garage and set it on the floor, it's personal property. If you nail it to the building, it becomes a part of that structure. So if the cargo containers are placed on a foundation, they are not a part of the structure. So therefore, they shouldn't be told what we can and can't do because they are personal property. They're not a structure. Your definition calls them permanent accessory structures, which you can't supersede the city's definition or the state's definition because you're an extension of the state. The state defines a structure as anything that is permanently attached to the ground. The other thing I'd like to show the council real quick, if I may, is- I've got some pictures you all can keep.
Go ahead and get those to the staff over there, please.
Okay. Got a picture of sharpies here, which look like it may have a cargo container set in metal. And I have these pictures of Lancaster school district's theater and milling. Those were, you know, like, then. Hank Kearns had promised that these would be enough city private to lose.
You have 30 seconds, sir.
And they've never been addressed. So this is a picture of what my cargo container looks like. And this is the private residence, 55 feet, runs about the middle of the road. And that's what you see. I put up a six-foot block wall, and I painted it. So in essence, I don't think you should regulate what we do with our private property on our personal property on our private property as long as it's not a nuisance to the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. There's also about 700 containers around my area.
Thank you. Are there any other agenda items to be removed, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir.
Okay. Let the record reflect that Councilman Silvio is now here with us. And Councilwoman Marcus, it wasn't on the agenda, but she says she has another one of a presentation or a speaker tonight?
That is Jared Simmons.
Jared Simmons. He's 12 years old, Palmdale Learning Plaza. And Jared, if you'll come on up.
You can have him stand right where the mayor is usually.
Come right up here.
That was good when you asked competition. There you go.
Hi. My name is Jared Simmons. My subject today is what is happening to America. Our country is undergoing many changes. Some of these changes are good, but some of them are very disturbing to those of us who have a strong faith in God. Within recent years, there have been more and more attacks upon long-held traditions that many of us hold dear to ourselves, such as public display of nativity scenes during the Christmas season. A small but loud minority has continued to oppose all kinds of public recognition of God. Some even want to remove "In God We Trust" from our money. Our country has always supported the principle of separation of church and state. But from history, we learn that this refers to the freedom of people to worship as they please without control or interference from the government. It never meant that the government was supposed to be opposed to religion or try to stop it. I noticed that this council includes prayer in your proceedings. How long will it be before nonbelievers try to force you to stop this practice? I hope that you will stand strong in that when my age group becomes adults, this rite will still exist. We depend on people like you to keep our freedom of expression alive. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Marcus. That was great, young man. Great speaking. Do we have any public business from the floor, unagendized items?
On CC6.
CC6?
That's the only one.
Okay, we'll get that when we get the consent calendar. Agency actions, the consent calendar. Do I hear any motions? Move adoption of the agency consent calendar?
I second that.
Call for a vote? unanimous with Mayor Parris absent? Agency new business one. I think it's gotta be Ms. Brubaker.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Smith and city council members. Staff is requesting that the agency board concur with the planning, environmental, and redevelopment processes necessary to implement and complete the Mariposa Neighborhood Master Vision Plan. However, I would like to elaborate on the importance of these master vision plans. To date, you have approved the Paiute and Trent Master Vision Plan, and before you tonight is Mariposa. And at the following city council meeting will be the Desert View Master Vision Plan. The vision plans are a tool for redevelopment. Pursuant to California redevelopment law, the agency is required to provide the state of California Housing Community Development a five-year implementation plan with the evidence that the 20% set aside funds are being used to remove and deter blight and provide workforce housing. This is extremely important to the functioning of the entire redevelopment agency. If we do not provide the information to the state that we have a plan to spend that money, we jeopardize the other 80%, which are used for economic development projects to stimulate the economy. So if we fail to provide these plans, we might not have had the stimulus packet that economic development rolled out. The vision plans provide the agency and city the ability to compete for more funds when funds become available. What takes place is funding becomes available, and you have to have a project for those funds to fit. When you have these numerous vision plans, when those funds become available, you can compete. In addition to that, you are more competitive as you receive higher points for having a vision plan as well as council's approval of those vision plans. The vision plans assist staff to effectively and efficiently budget the housing funds to benefit the entire community by removing blight and providing workforce housing, thereby improving the sustainability of the neighborhoods. Vision plans are a tool for private development. Developers use the vision plans to obtain funding for their projects, as was done in the north downtown transit village and the downtown Lancaster. It is all about leveraging private funds with public funds to improve the stability of the neighborhoods. Had it not been for the vision plans, we would not have the Children's Center of the Antelope Valley, the Mental Health Association, a state-of-the-art elderly care center, which was the conversion of the XX House into an elderly community. We would not have the construction underway for the artist's lofts in the downtown. So it's extremely important, as these funds are competitive, for the developers to obtain these funds to do these projects that benefit the entire community. In addition, the vision plans assist private developers to create their own visions for projects within the neighborhoods where the city is working to improve the neighborhoods and benefit the entire community by removing blight. Vision plans provide guidance to agencies and departments for making long-term decisions that evolve through implementation over time. Vision plans are not etched in stone, much like a general plan, master plan, specific plan, or a zoning map. And projects and subject vision areas are done with funds when they are available and approved by the agency board and city council. The Northeast Gateway Corridors Project was approved in 2004, and the Mariposa Neighborhood is a neighborhood within the subject area. The basis for the approval was the city council's concern with the overall lack of maintenance, deterioration of neighborhoods, and increase of criminal activity, drugs, prostitution, and gangs, and the need to remove the blighting conditions and revitalize the area. As staff implemented the Northeast Gateway Corridors Project, it was apparent that four square miles is too large of an area for the purposes of redevelopment and neighborhood revitalization. The Mariposa Neighborhood is an established area of Lancaster and is divided as the area from 10th Street West to Sierra Highway and Avenue I to Avenue H. The existing conditions of the Mariposa Neighborhood are as follows. Increased criminal activity, increased code violations, lack of cohesive commercial uses and maintenance, homes currently in foreclosure, homes in various states of disrepair, vacant parcels, disjointed circulation, and minimal park and open space. Successful efforts are currently being implemented in the Mariposa Neighborhood to mediate these existing conditions. I believe that Mariposa was the second neighborhood for the High Impact Program where a high-impact team, TOP, COPS, CORE, LandCAP, did targeted enforcement to attempt to eliminate gangs, drug dealing, and civil disobedience. Intense code enforcement efforts were made in this area and continue to be made to have owners comply with the Lancaster Municipal Code. Housing has done numerous housing rehab programs and renovations to improve the appearance of the properties within these neighborhoods. Home foreclosure purchases continue. This is a before, and this is an after. That makes a huge difference in the neighborhood, especially in its appearance. Neighborhood and community building works with the residents of the community to take pride in their neighborhood and work at increasing and improving their own neighborhood. Construction of the Wick Carter Park. The addition of the Wick Carter Park, and if you guys haven't driven out there, you should. It's very impressive as to what's already been done, and it's already made the area look better than it was before. The addition of the Wick Carter Park will provide open space and park amenities, become a regional draw, add to neighborhood character, and increase access to nearby commercial. The future residential development will complete and enhance the neighborhood circulation patterns between those houses built in the '50s, the '80s, the 2000s, and then in the near future. It will create better access into and out of neighborhoods and calm traffic. oops. Reconstruction of the main arterials will reduce traffic speeds in residential areas, improve safety to houses fronting on 10th Street West, support safe pedestrian environment, maintain movement through the corridor. Circulation improvements will increase connectivity, calm internal traffic, and enhance neighborhood gateways. And these gateways will become important when the neighborhood changes. It'll be what people see and know that it has improved. Commercial revitalization will enhance existing commercial buildings along Avenue I and Sierra Highway and provide commercial redevelopment opportunities to serve the neighborhood. Construction of the bike pathway will provide connection to existing bike paths. Think this. There we go. Sorry. Provide multi-use access to Wick Carter Park and enhance citywide bikeway plan. This is the Mariposa Master Vision Plan, which RBF worked with individual staff members, law enforcement agencies, and other agencies. Then staff worked with each other, and then came and presented it to the Development Review Committee to come out with this vision plan. I'm very excited about presenting the subject vision plan to you for your concurrence with the planning effort to date and direct staff to continue with the actions necessary to implement the Mariposa Neighborhood Master Vision Plan. The implementation of the vision plan and the progress that has been made to date in the neighborhoods due to agency staff, city staff, and county staff, and the passion and dedication staff has to turning the subject neighborhoods around is exhilarating. These plans change people and how they view their environment and themselves, the neighborhood, and the community. Sometimes it can be discouraging as it takes a lot of discipline, dedication, tenacity, consistency, perseverance, and time. However, if you drive through the neighborhoods, you can see the change, and the neighborhoods will continue to change in a positive direction. If you have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions or discussion from the council? With that being the case, unless there's any dissent, I'll say that we have consensus on concurrence and to move forward with direct staff to move forward with the planning and redevelopment process for the vision plan. Consent calendar. We've removed- Councilman Silvio, we removed CC8 and CC6. So do I hear a motion? Any- if there's nothing else to be removed from the consent calendar, do I hear a motion to adopt it as currently comprised?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Call for a vote? unanimous. We have CC6. Speaker card, Madam Clerk.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Tremere. I live at 1225 West Lancaster Boulevard. Of course, it's just down the street. I was reading in the Valley Press that the city is considering increasing the speed limit. In my particular case, it'll be right in front of my house, which, you know, when I bought the house, I realized it was on Lancaster Boulevard. But there's a particular situation from 10th Street West where Avens is. When people are actually in the west lane or going westbound from Avens, they hit that little curve in the road, and they believe, I believe they think they're at Willow Springs instead of on a city street. So the speed limit is 45. The city is talking about increasing it. I don't know how much higher they could possibly increase it as to what it is right now. But if anything, it should be lowered. Approximately five years ago, a child was killed in the crosswalk right there on 11th Street West and Lancaster Boulevard. The city came through and put up a couple of big flashing signs, but they don't work anymore or they're turned off. That's about it. I think it should be lowered instead of raised, but.
Thank you. We'll- we can direct staff to look into it. We'll probably pass the- you know, we'll vote on the ordinance tonight, the second reading. And then- but that doesn't mean we can- we don't- we cannot change, have the ability to change it in the future. So we'll have- we'll direct staff to look into that. Thank you.
Mr. Workman will get your contact information, and then he can have someone call you about that.
Okay. Do I hear a motion on CC6? Move adoption, CC6?
I second that.
Call for a vote? unanimous. Public hearing number one. This is the proposed Silmetto Lane sewer line near the southwest corner. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to direct the city clerk to canvass the ballots and declare the results of March 10th, 2009. Well, that's the date today, so that's a- We're gonna direct you to canvass it today. How's that? Okay. Do I hear a motion for that?
Asso stated.
Do I hear a second? Okay. Call for a vote? unanimous. At this time, we shall take a short recess while the city clerk canvases the ballots. I don't like gavels. Called meeting back to order. Madam Clerk, could you give us the results of the canvassing?
Yes, sir. We had a 100% voter turnout, by the way.
Excellent.
Eight ballots were sent out and eight ballots were received. Six ballots are in support of the assessment, and two ballots are opposed.
Okay. With that being- does that give us a- we just need a simple majority, so we have a simple majority. If there's any discussion, any speaker's cards on this? Anybody that wanted to speak on this? Okay. I'll entertain a motion for resolution number 0912 from the council.
I move that we adopt resolution number 0912.
I second that.
Call for a vote? I think it's unanimous. Joint new business number one, vehicle rebate program addition. I have on my list here, we're gonna have the city manager, Mr. Bozignian, speak first.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and city council members. Today, we're before you to ask that you add the purchase of new motorcycles, licensed for street use and sold in Lancaster to our vehicle rebate program that's included in the Lancaster Economic Stimulus Program. With us today, we have Ron E. Mart. He's the owner of Harley-Davidson, so I'm gonna ask him to make a couple of comments at the end. But first, I'd like to direct you to our sign over here. That announces our shop-and-dine program, the vehicle registration program. And what I'd like to point out is Vern Lawson and his staff have done a very nice job. A lot of ideas take hundreds of little steps to implement, and they've been running around getting gift cards ready and doing that, so they've done a nice job. What we expect of adding the motorcycles to our program, first off, the fiscal impact, the cost to the city will be $21,000 out of redevelopment funding, not general funds. But what we expect is it will generate $1.8 million in additional sales of motorcycles in the city, new motorcycles. At an average cost of $15,000 per motorcycle and 1.2% sales price, the average rebate card, gift card that would go to a buyer of motorcycle in Lancaster would be $180. We think this is a good addition to the program. We know the auto dealers have been very enthused. Sales numbers for last week, while proprietary, look very good. And it's clear that the program is having an impact on significantly more traffic in the Lancaster Auto Mall. With that, I'd like to ask Mr. E. Mart if he'd like to say a couple of words.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson, by the way. I was again, city council. Yeah, we're looking forward to it. Business has been okay, but we definitely can use the push on it. And we're an integral part of transfer- part of transportation right now. As gas prices start to rise, our business gets better, but we really appreciate the City Council considering this and including us in on this stimulus package. Thank you very much.
Great. Now you have to advertise down in L.A. and tell them to come up here to buy all their motorcycles.
We'll try. Thank you.
Hey, is that Mr. Bozignian? Okay. We have no speaker's cards and so we'll take a motion on that.
I move that we direct city manager to add the purchase of new motorcycles to the vehicle rebate program.
I'll second that.
Call for vote. Unanimous. New business one. Mr. Bozignian.
Thank you again, Vice Mayor and City Council members. Before you, we're asking for authorization to direct city manager to develop and implement a volunteer, voluntary separation program with an early retirement incentive. Just a brief bit of background, as you know, the city so far in this fiscal year has cut $12 million from the budget and we haven't done that with any adverse impact to the public, nor have we cut it on the backs of employees. What we've also done is we've been able to keep reserves which provide security for the city. As you also know, we're looking at potentially a $10 million deficit next budget year. Staff right now is putting together our budget proposals and recommendations for you with the goal, again, of not adversely impacting service and presenting a balanced budget to you for fiscal year 2009, 2010. You will be getting that sometime towards the end of May, beginning of June. We're considering many options. One of them that we've been already implemented deals with staffing. As you know, we have somewhere between 22 or 24 vacancies now that we have not filled, so that provides savings. One option that we're looking at is a voluntary retirement program. That takes a little bit more of a long lead to get implemented, so we're asking for authorization now to put that together. It will be targeted and limited only to those positions that the city can afford to have vacant or have another vacant position for a number of months to produce the savings. We would expect that the program would pay for itself with vacancies within the first six months to a year. It will be flexible. A voluntary program allows for flexibility in terms of opening up promotional opportunities for other qualified employees within the city. And it allows us, again, to maintain our best resource, which is the staff, to deliver the programs you want delivered. We do sincerely appreciate the support that the council has shown throughout the last year and the prior council as well too for staff. And in exchange, we've, I think we've had some pretty good ideas and creative programs come forward as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Bozignian or staff? Just one comment, just to reiterate that this is voluntary.
Absolutely.
We've never, as far back as I can remember, in the last several years, far back as I can remember, had any mandatory layoffs. This is voluntary. Our staff is, does an incredible job. We value each and every one of them and this is their choice, not ours, if they choose to separate.
Absolutely. It's voluntary and we've already talked to the employees to let them know, outline some broad parameters and such.
Right, yeah. I'd like to just thank staff again for just doing a great job and that's why we're doing, in such an economic downturn, we're doing fiscally, we'd like to do better, but we're doing very well. And one thing, just so the public knows also, these vacancies, what the staff has done creatively is moved positions within the city from, from funds that pay for them from the general fund, which we pay for cops, and moved them over to other positions where we pay for, with restricted funds that we can only use for certain things. So that even frees up more general fund money and that's what we're usually short on when the sales tax goes down. So, great job. Do I hear a motion? Move to authorize city manager to develop and implement the voluntary separation program.
I second that.
Call for vote. Thank you. It's unanimous. New business two, highway safety improvement program.
Vice Mayor and City Council members, very happy to be here tonight to be able to announce we have received approximately $750,000 in highway safety improvement program funds. The action before you tonight is to ask you to appropriate those funds to fund two projects within the city of Lancaster. One would be to add a much-needed left-hand turn lane on Avenue I at Fortieth Street West and the other project would be to fund traffic signal upgrades and improvements at five intersections throughout the city. These two capital projects would be able to go forward and build needed safety improvements and make the roads safer for the traveling public. So we would recommend that you approve the recommended actions on the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments for staff? I'd just like to say this is just another creative way. You know, we're still providing the services and getting the job done and staff was out there to get, you know, almost a million dollars worth of grant money that we can, that we can use. So thumbs up again, so. Do I hear a motion?
We approve the highway safety improvement program.
I second that.
Call for vote. Unanimous. Council agenda, item number one has been removed until the mayor is back the next time. City manager, do you have any announcements?
No, sir.
Madam Clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time when you can address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find the speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill them out very clearly and concisely in order to allow staff a chance to respond and get in touch with you if necessary. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, you'll notice three lights. The green light comes on when you have, your time begins. The yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds left and the red light comes on when your time is up. We do ask that you be considerate of the three-minute time limit to allow other people to have their chance to speak as well. State law does prohibit the city council from taking action on items that are not on the agenda and your matter will be referred to the city manager.
Madam Clerk, how many cards, do, speaker's cards?
We have nine speakers.
Nine speakers. Okay.
Our first speaker is David Paul.
At this time, we're not accepting any more speaker's cards.
Mr. Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. As much as I love you, Vice Mayor Smith, it's not the same without Mayor Paris. I don't know. I'm gonna reserve some of the things I was gonna say. I just wanted to stop and mention this. There's a quote in yesterday's paper, it says, "Conscience is the perfect interpreter of life." And that's true, as long as you have a conscience. I wanna point your attention to one of our other great local newspapers, The Political Observer, that I have an article in this month. So if you have a chance to pick that up, please do so because it explains a little bit about the people that have no conscience and what part they play in us trying to solve things as we go forward. But good evening to you all and pleasure to see you.
David, that's a new record for you.
Our next speaker is Eric and I won't even attempt to pronounce the last name, I wouldn't wanna butcher it.
Eric B.
Eric B.
That's good enough.
Okay.
Thank you. My statement is on, of course, the Big Box Initiative in the west side. First, I am for big boxes. I don't see anything wrong with them, but I'm against this, the big thing is because it's right across the street from an existing high school. I just don't see any support in that. Two major supercenters from the north and east. And I was just out there this afternoon, the traffic on Avenue L after school was backed up all the way to the baseball field. Students were literally running up and down across the streets. I was lucky, there wasn't even accidents along that time. The valley's best academic high schools will probably be truant. I have more truancy and trust me being 19 years old, I know where high school students usually go and one of the few is Walmarts. Supercenters also attract a lot of crime in the area. I mean, when the suspects make a run for it, they might run into the school and try to hide there. I mean, I thought we were concerned enough about our students' safety in schools. You never see a school where a major supercenter is like right across the street or in the neighborhood school. Maybe you should try and figure out where that is. I was, I passed by Quartzville Elementary School where potential future students at Quartzville High School are probably going to be and seeing the parents, I just wonder how they might feel about this and, I mean, it's really a worrisome moment. I'm for big boxes, but I just think that it should be in a way to where it doesn't threaten students while they're in schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get clarification on one item? Are you against just the Walmart or there's potential for another commercial project at that intersection as well? Is it both projects or just the one that?
Both.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Vice Mayor and Council members, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'll assure the count, the city lawyer, I'm not gonna ask for any Bound Act violations. I'm not gonna ask you to do anything. This is purely just for information. I wanted to talk about some of the things contained in the draft environmental impact report on the proposed projects that Eric talked about. I have a few quotes here from that document for you, just like I said, for information. One of the things in talking, particularly in the common summary, it said, quote, "An increase in the demand for police protection services is anticipated. The juxtaposition of the proposed project near sensitive uses such as residences and schools could potentially result in additional crime to the area." I find it incredible that they would use the word "potential" here because those are, you know, right across from the high school there where they wanna put the Walmart's in empty field right now. There is no crime. So even if there's a single crime, it's not a potential, it's obvious the crime's gonna increase there. And the report doesn't talk about any mitigation measures for the increased crime that will come to the residents and the schools. Another thing the draft said, it said, "The proposed project would not result in the need for construction or expansion of police stations or other police protection facilities to maintain current service demand, the construction of which would, could cause a significant environmental impact report." Now, in this particular quote, the word "current" there has a very significant impact. By talking about that, or projecting what the current service demand, obviously without any crime there on those vacant lots, it implies that there's going to be enough police protection for the projects when it's built. And we know from the Walmart over on the east side that that's just not true. And we know the special hoops people had to jump through to get police protection there. Another one.
Thirty seconds.
"The proposed structures are compatible with the surrounding one- to two-story residential and institutional buildings." Among me, the obvious question is, how can a super-commercial center be compatible with homes and schools? And the last one, with the surrounding land uses institutional, speaking about Lane Ranch, that it's compatible with the surrounding land uses institutional and residential. If you look there, you'll see there are no commercial uses there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hecker. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Reading the draft DIR, I'm sure you guys will not bother. It's over 3,600 pages. So I thought I'd bring to your attention the deficiencies, inadequacies, and half-truths that I found in it. First of all, at the public meetings held to notify residents of the proposals, they had asked us residents and parents of students what concerns we would like to be addressed in the draft DIR, or, excuse me, the EIR. The major concerns after traffic and student safety was truancy and lower property values. These concerns, as well as many others that residents specifically requested, are recorded in the appendices of both EIRs. But neither project bothered to address these important environmental issues. Many residents already living near the commercial, near other commercial centers recount problems with shopping carts. Not only are shopping carts abandoned on private and public land, but many end up blocking residential streets. How will this traffic hazard be avoided or mitigated? We'll never know. It's not addressed in the EIR. The effects of trash generated from the stores and the fast-food establishments is another issue to be found in the appendices of requested citizen concerns and it too has been not addressed in the EIR. There is no way to prevent the wind from blowing plastic bags, fast-food packages, and other trash onto residential property or surrounding land. So who will be responsible to clean this up? The residents? The impact of values of homes in the neighborhood is also totally ignored. Many homeowners purchased their homes in this rural residential neighborhood to escape the urban-city environment. These commercial centers will completely change the character of the neighborhood. Many homeowners wishing to move to escape the enthracement of commercial into the neighborhood and the problems that commercialization will bring will find few buyers willing to live not near one, but two, supercenters. Homes in this area, and let me point out, those supercenters are discount stores. Homes in this area are, were considered by realtors and potential homeowners as the most desirable in the Antelope Valley and commanded higher prices than a similar home built on the east side. This is why years ago Lancaster and Palmdale fought to annex as much property on the west side as they could. If these commercial centers are built, the neighborhood will no longer be desirable and property values will drop.
Thirty seconds.
The EIR needs to investigate the downward change in property values to the homes surrounding these supercenters and develop a strategy that will allow the fleeing residents monetary compensation for the reduced property values. Many homeowners will be happy to leave the area to let others who want to live near supercenter strip malls move in. Truancy is another EIR deficiency that affects a large number of people since students come from as far away as Leona Valley and Lake Hughes. The EIR needs to investigate all the aspects of rezoning to commercial we'll have on the schools.
Next speaker, please.
John Skefty.
Hope I pronounced that right. Good evening, Vice Mayor Smith and City Council members. I'm here in front of you today to announce a Antelope Valley Tea Party that I will have here in the city on April 11th. I wish to do it at 10:00 a.m. I wish to get your consent, information from you as to where I can have it within the city, whether we have it at a park or in front of City Hall. It'll take approximately two hours. I anticipate at least 500 people demonstrating our, the recent taxes foisted upon us by state and federal government. That is it.
Thank you, John. We'll direct you to the city manager to talk to him, answer any questions. Thanks. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Okay, I'll take it.
Okay, I'll take it. Okay. Okay, I think this is my first time ever doing this. Anyway, the city of Lancaster sent me some papers to get some work done for my house, and because I'm on disability, it was nice, because when I got out of the hospital, I was trying to do the work myself for the lack of finances. Anyway, I had a design in my head that I wanted done, because in my younger days, I wanted the artwork of different things, but because I was an architecture designer, because I'm lousy in math, anyway, the thing is, is this came, they came out and they wanted me to write down the things that I wanted, but my lack of understanding, I wrote down the design things I wanted, and quite a few of the things they said no to. But they didn't tell me, put a list, and when we say no, then you still can get something else in there to, you know, replace that or anything, they just, the thing. So like, my thing that I wrote is like, replace made majority of grass with recycled broken concrete sturdy enough for a car or motorhome, and in between of that, I was thinking of the liquid concrete that would dry so that it was one piece solid, no grass would grow up in there, and no, nothing else. But the people that came out there, because I don't know the people who's in the business, I told the city, I said, "Well, you can choose the designers, I mean, whoever's going to do the work," because I don't know who they are, I don't know how good they are. So, and, trust me, I'm not trying to be mad at, because I love this city, I love Lancaster, I do. But the people that they hired to do the work, they just came in and they were polite to me, I must, they were very polite, they didn't get me wrong, but every time I said, "Well, I like this, that, and that, oh, no, well, we can't do that, we have to do..." Instead of the liquid concrete that would keep the pebbles from flying in, because the school bus stops right at the side of my house, and I'm thinking, these little granulated concrete pebbles that they had on there, the wind can blow it out, which it does, and one of those pictures you'll see it is on the sidewalk, where the kids, if they're running for the bus, they could trip and fall on it and slip, and then they can sue me. A lot of the things that I wanted in there, like the fence they fixed, they put it up there, the brown wood fence, but they didn't paint it like the other fence, and the city's saying they want my house to look so that when people drive down, it looks good. But everything I said, and underneath the sink, they put wood over this hole that was in there that I think is molding mildew.
Ma'am, thank you. Time's up. I'm going to direct you to the city manager, and then he can find the staff that can maybe address your concerns. Before you leave, we'll get some contact information from you, and someone will call you.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Mike Scott.
Oh, and my dad was here, so she tell ya, I ain't one of them.
Tell us what, she's okay?
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Scott, I'm a director on the board of Cortez Water District. I'm here to talk about Lane Ranch and the Walmart, the comments. Right now, Lane Ranch is a real scenic ranch, and what I understand is that they're going to put another box store there. When we moved to Cortez, we moved there because people were riding their horses down 50th Street. That's where I wanted to raise my kids. It seems like that's all going to change. There was an alternative that was suggested for there instead of a box store, and that was a historical museum. I think that would be great for right next door to a high school. As a director on the Cortez Water Board, I was reading through some of the facts that were on a CD that I'd received. It seems as though that the water that's going to be consumed there, I was reading, it says that the state CEQA guidelines state that the water is a slowly renewable resource, and we know that there's a court-ordered limit to how much water we can get from the delta, especially during certain seasons. The facts that were given out was in 2005. That's, a lot of those things have changed since this plan was enacted. A thousand acre feet that was allocated for that is good for, well, it's going to be for 82 related projects, and a thousand acre feet is, it's about a thousand, one acre foot per house that's going to be used per year, so that's 1,000 houses that are going to be shy of water. The facts don't all pan out either. I noticed that there's going to be reclaimed water for irrigation. There is no purple pipes in the area of west Lancaster. And I've also noticed that they're planning on getting the water from the Cortez Water District. I've checked with my general manager, and I know that I haven't voted for a will-served letter. So these are the things that I'm concerned about, I'm also concerned about box stores in that area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Jim Barnetta.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the council. I'd like to address the issue of the storage containers.
Sir, we can't address that at this time, that was already taken, this is for non-agendized items.
You mean, I can't comment on it at all?
No. You can comment on it when it comes back.
Judy.
So everybody understands this is for non-agendized items, we already had that, and we already called speaker's cards for that, and we already had the discussion. That was continued for another time, it's going to be amended, and it's going to be brought back, and then at that time, you can give your input before we vote. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Judy Hist.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Smith and council members, I am Judy Hist, I'm the library manager at the Lancaster Library, and I'm here to tell you about a performance that we are going to be having at the library this coming Thursday. The County of Los Angeles Public Library, as well as the Lancaster Library, is pleased to be a recipient of a grant called Page and Stage from the National Endowment of the Humanities and Aquila Theater. The library is one of three sites on the west coast to host a performance of Homer's Iliad, from hip-hop, from Homer to hip-hop, reinventing the classics. So the performance will be performed in a hip-hop style. Our performance is scheduled for this coming Thursday, March 12th, at 4:30 p.m. at the library. In addition, we will be having a workshop prior to the performance at 3:00 p.m. to discuss the play with the actors. A reading group and a lecture series on Homer's Iliad will be presented at a later date. The library has also a display on ancient Greece and the history and Troy and Iliad and everything. The program is geared for teens and adults, and we encourage you, as council people, the citizens of Lancaster, and the city staff to attend the program. It's a unique performance that we are having, and we really are happy and pleased to have it. Also, in addition, the Lancaster Performing Arts Center is partnering with us. They are going to be publicizing the events, and they are generously offering a 10% discount to library patrons for any performances coming up if the patron comes in with their library card. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
That concludes our speakers.
Okay, that being the case, we now have council reports. Council member Cilio.
The report I have is on the Edwards Air Force Base Restoration Advisory Board. Nothing earth-shaking, just some changes in their, the RAB did not have a normal method of the public addressing them. They were bound by some federal regulations that they could not be addressed by members of the public, they actually had to pull a RAB member aside, and the RAB member had to bring their concern up. That's been changed, they now operate much more similar process than we do. The other item is that the appointments to the RAB are for one year. Our appointments are up, we currently have our environmental engineer, Mr. Peter Zorbras, our primary appointee, and myself as the alternate. I'm going to suggest to Mayor Paris when he comes back that we just continue with that, and that will require a letter on his behalf, on our behalf, to the base commander, and that's it.
Okay. If we need a vote on it, then we'll put it on the agenda for next time? Do we need a vote on that?
It's simply letters, a request from the mayor, because actually, the appointment's made by the base commander.
Okay, great, okay, that's good. I have one report, whenever you travel on the city's expense, you have to give a report of what happened, and so twice, I had the honor, and went down to LA, and we, as a city, appeared on the Fox Business News Network, on the Stuart Varney Show, and also, I appeared on Sunday morning on Fox and Friends, talking about our stimulus package. And so we got a great national bump from that, in fact, I got some emails from people from Florida and some other places. I think Mr. Buzigian was going to make a few comments on some of the things that have happened also.
Before I make that, I think the Vice Mayor did a very nice job of representing the city, and I was with a few folks, and they were very proud from being for the city that the city was out front with a stimulus package. Also, Fox News was quite impressed, too. What I wanted to say is that it's very important that we get the word out beyond the Antelope Valley. A lot of times, we forget, you know, our stimulus package is focused on internal, because if we just get folks that buy cars outside this area, we'll be doing much better. But there's also a market out there that we don't typically tap, and today, we just got word, one of the rebates we gave was a gentleman who saw either one of those two shows and came down and bought a, or some other local show, and bought a $23,000 vehicle at Hunter Dodge from Beverly Hills, the 90210, and I'm guessing that's not a market we penetrate too often, so that's what we're looking at, is just to get the word out.
Like two more. Just start running the ads down there on their cable television.
No problem.
Like Santa Clarita does to us.
Yeah, but it is very important that the word gets out, because what we want is folks to come here to buy their cars as well, too, so that's an added bonus.
Okay, with that, is there any other council reports? Any council agency comments? Anything to put on the agenda next time? That being the case, then I'm going to call this meeting adjourned until Tuesday, March 24th, 2009, at 5 o'clock. Thank you.